For the public that can't see.[1.62][1.62](laughter) All right, let's go on to the work session on Monday, December 9th, 2013. It is now 4:30. Tonight's, we have a work session and then a regular meeting. The regular meeting will begin at 6 o'clock, so you'll have some time, I think. During this meeting, Councilwoman Osborn will not be attending, but she'll be here by the time of the regular meetings. So let's start out with the first item, 3.1. Make sure I have the right one. We only have two on the work session tonight. The first one is the overview of the direct delivery versus indirect potable reuse of reclaimed water supplies. Mark Holmes to present. Mark?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this evening, first I guess I'll just indicate I provided kind of a comprehensive packet in the COAC, some background information, and trying to minimize the presentation tonight so we can have more discussion. I'll be looking hopefully for some guidance from you to move forward. But tonight's presentation is direct versus indirect deliveries of reclaimed water. So kind of in that format, direct versus indirect, we'll start with direct deliveries. Direct deliveries, this is the infamous purple pipe, which you've heard and we've seen. It's delivered at a reduced rate. It's non-potable water. For water intensive uses, that includes, these are turf facilities, irrigation for agricultural purposes, also provides water for recreational amenities, also used for electrical generation, such as Palaverdy, and also industrial uses for processed water. And again, it's directly delivered through secondary infrastructure known as purple pipe, in addition to the potable system. So if you have a dual system, you'd have a potable system and then a purple pipe for non-potable, and that would obviously increase or significantly increase or double your cost of services for deliveries of those water supplies. Some of the direct delivery challenges include, may still require a water reclamation plant disposal system. So if you're delivering non-potable reclaimed water directly for, let's say, turf facilities during the winter months when they don't have the demand, where does the reclamation facility put that water? You still need to have disposal systems. And similarly, in the winter times during peak usage, you may not have enough reclaimed water for all those peak demands. Also, may provide only a single reuse. So turf facilities, irrigation, or those recreational amenities that use water, you may only get one single reuse for that water. It will be consumed by those plants or that amenity. Also creates master plan challenges. This would be if you, if development chose to decrease or downsize their potable system, if their outdoor water use or a lot of their water intensive facilities would be served through reclaimed water. But what would happen if you had something like a large industrial user come online, downgrading of that, who may have a very large potable water demand, and of course now you have a bottleneck in your infrastructure. Also, water quality issues. Salinity and total dissolved solids such as calcium, magnesium, they can create challenges for some of the uses. At the ball field, for example, we blend potable and reclaimed water due to the water quality issues. Turf has a tough time with certain water quality components. Also, there's reduced revenues. The basically may not pay for the purple pipe system for the cost of services. I attended in July of this year the Arizona Water Reuse Conference in Flagstaff, Arizona, and I polled an entire conference room full of cities and towns and entities who had purple pipe, and just asked a simple question, is your overall purple pipe system paying for itself? Please raise your hands. No hands went up. There's one exemption to that, and that's the City of Scottsdale. It's a, it's a very well-defined, it's not like a municipal system, but it's City of Scottsdale formed an agreement with 23 golf courses, and they have a prescribed rate and a mechanism for delivery. But again, they have many challenges as well. But overall, in the entire state that attended that conference, it was pretty well-covered. Nobody raised their hand.
Now, you said a prescribed rate. They have a higher rate.
Correct.
That's what that, okay.
To make sure it pays for the cost.
That makes me feel better. I thought there was some deal going on.
That is correct. Through an agreement, through a special agreement.
All right.
Again, direct non-potable water sold at a significantly reduced rate. So the question is, at a discounted water supply used as efficiently or sustainably as compared to a more expensive potable rate, or potable water. And of course, during future shortages, if there's curtailments, we still have to dispose of reclaimed water. Is that a fair and consistent standard? Those that would be curtailed on potable versus those that have to take the water for a disposal mechanism for reclaimed system? So let's go ahead and jump on to the indirect potable reuse. This would be indirect deliveries or indirect potable reuse. This would be reclaimed water stored underground and recovered in the future when needed. Again, this, when it's stored underground, the[311.69][311.69](noise) the Class A plus effluent that we are generating, in many instances, is better water quality than what is currently the water quality of groundwater. So this would actually improve the water quality of the aquifer. Once recovered, the reclaimed water is delivered via the potable water system, transmission and distribution system. So right now, that would only require one infrastructure. There would be no purple pipe requirements. Thus, you'd have reduced cost of services. Potable water is sold at potable water rates, and built into those rates is efficiency and conservation components. The more you use, the more you pay. Those inverted tier block rates. The percent of water is recovered and made available for additional reuses. What this means is that currently what we deliver through our potable system, we get 40% back, back to the reclamation facility that we can[362.19][362.19](noise) and use over and over again. Having one infrastructure provides for better master planning. We can try and plan the overall maximum size of our one single infrastructure. Again, it provides better aquifer management, as I mentioned, storing water underground, using it when you need to. Also, potable water has the best water quality components, so it really meets all of the end users' amenity needs. And the water revenues pay for the cost of services. It pays for itself. And during curtailment, should we have a curtailment, everybody's treated fair and There are challenges, though, for the indirect potable reuse. Reclaimed water must be recharged and stored underground within the aquifer. That requires various permits, infrastructure, and recharge systems. We know there's our costs associated with that.[414.62][414.62](noise)
So can I stop you there? Okay, so you've already figured out how many recharge, where we'd have to recharge all the systems, I mean recharge systems?
Currently, within the city, we have, right now, we're looking at the SAT site as a temporary recharge facility, which is our former
Just temporary.
Just temporary. And then we're utilizing, right now, the first phase of the Vadosone injection wells, which we discussed earlier in a session.
Yes.
Which would be a permanent disposal mechanism for storing water, reclaimed water underground.
Okay.
And so reclaimed water stored underground must be indirectly recovered. That would be via well systems. We currently have, all of our water production wells are recovery well permitted, so we actually have the ability right now to recover reclaimed water indirectly and put into our potable system. And recharge is not suitable for all areas. One size does not fit all. So if your community or your area is over an area that is hard rock or very thin aquifer material, it's hard to get permits to store water where there's no aquifer to store the water. So purple pipe may be suitable for certain areas. This is an example I wanted to show you. This is a chart on the vertical left axis. This is dollars, and this would be considered a monthly cost. On the bottom, you'll see the dark kind of purple color is potable water rate, potable water quantity, I should say, and that's amount of water delivered per month. And at the top, you'll see it's 150,000 gallons per month being delivered through a two-inch meter base. This would be for a typical, let's say, an HOA turf facility, water intensive turf facility. The light purple or pink is the reclaimed water or effluent rates. And these are for the various cities, City Goodyear's first. We have Liberty, Avondale, Buckeye, Peoria, Surprise, Phoenix, Glendale, and Gilbert. And just wanted to show you the comparison between the potable versus the reclaimed or effluent water rates. Thus, you can probably, it makes sense that when I raise the question whether they pay for themselves with purple pipe systems, the answer is probably not. So it begs the question, there's a difference in revenue and expenditure, obviously. But just want to show you this, this example here that just begs the question, is this water used as efficiently as potable water and sustainably?[551.41][551.41](noise) By the way, the meter fees were similar in all these cases. It was strictly looking at the commodity costs. So I do want to touch base real quick on the 1994 law that was passed. It dealt with underground water storage, savings and replenishment law. The law was designed to ensure the protection of the general welfare, economy and welfare of the state. This was done through efficient and cost-effective water management, water supplies. The three components within this law, the aquifer would become the water treatment plant. So you put your Class A plus effluent in a recharge facility, the aquifer's going to clean it to even higher standards, so the aquifer becomes your water treatment facility. So there's a cost of infrastructure not needed to build additional treatment plants. The aquifer would act like the piping between where the water is recharged and where the water is needed, to be recovered through either a groundwater recovery well. And this law virtually replaced the purple pipe need. So what does that really mean? I wanted to kind of show you this through a simple cartoon. So this is kind of a cross-section, if you will, looking through the aquifer. And the purple box there on the left is our reclamation facility that is bringing out our Class A plus reclaimed water out to, the arrow pointing down the top, to our former SAT site, could be one recharge style, or to a Vadosone injection well. Kind of those gray shaded areas show the reclaimed water infiltrating back through the Vadosone, back to the groundwater system. And on the right, you see that's the city's recovery well. So we're actually pumping groundwater molecules and treating those water molecules into our distribution system for as potable water. So in essence, what this law is really doing is, it's using the aquifer as your bank, and it's basically, you're transforming groundwater molecules that you're pumping, changing their legal characteristic into reclaimed water. Thus, one infrastructure, one delivery, we can still put reclaimed legally into those pipes.
Joe?
Mark, where is that fine line? Because it's my understanding, we're still on wells. So whatever you pump out, you've got to put back in.
That is correct.
Okay, you've got to have zero mining. So I assume there's, even though, you know, maybe cheaper, or whatever the cost may be to use the reuse or the recharge or the reuse water for golf courses, et cetera, there's value in that in putting it in the aquifer, because if you don't, you've got to get it somewhere else to put in the aquifer to get that zero mining. Is that, am I, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what's, what's, what's kind of the break even deal on that since we're on the wells? Now, if we were taking water from the CAP, that'd be a different issue, I would suspect. But the fact most of it's coming out of the ground, how does that affect the decision on, you know, selling it as a, you know, as reuse or putting it in the ground?
That's a, that's a very great question. From a financial standpoint, it gets down into the cost point of, let's say you're a business and you have a need for, you could take non-potable water, but let's say we go ahead and deliver potable water. Obviously, there's a margin to examine if that business is going to evaluate its ability to be able to pay for potable water versus reclaimed water. You are correct. All the water that we do pump has to be replenished. So whatever we put into the ground and we pump out and recover, that is all part of that replenishment process. And I will touch on, just a few minutes, that long-term storage credit bank account, which the importance of that and to that point is, the goal, how much water do we need in the ground, and what is the purpose of that water underground, and how long do we hold on to that water? And of course, the value of this, per acre foot of reclaimed water is about just under $200 an acre foot. It's equivalent to the CAP price, price point of water. And so if you hold on to that water, say, for 10 years, and the CAP acre foot price of water is, say, $400, well, you've just improved the value of that $200 acre foot of water.
Yeah, and that's my concern. If we sell too much of it, and we have to put more of it in the ground, and the price of purchasing it to put in the ground becomes very expensive, then where do you go?
You're right, you're right on. And that is, the longer, the longer you wait to put water in the ground for the future, the more it's going to cost you. Right now, as I've always said, you've heard me say several times, water is only cheap today as it's ever going to be in the, in the future. So now is the time to try and bank that water. You're right on. Whoops, let me go back.
Sherry?
I just, it was I just wanted to know if you could give, like, for the, maybe the people watching, we can see it goes 10 miles, but how deep does it go in the aquifer, and then how long does it take? I knew, you've told us before that it recharges as it percolates down. Could you give, like, a little, just a little water lesson on how it cleans it and how long it takes to get back up to the recovery well?
Sure. Great question. Most of the actual water treatment occurs in the first few feet of the Vadosone, where all that infiltration occurs, the first few feet, the water pretty much is purified into clean, as clean as water as you're going to get, matching what, what the groundwater is. Water flows in some instances, for example, at the SAT site and 157th Avenue where the Vadosone wells are, let's just say that it's up gradient somewhere else. It could take on the order of a decade, 20 years, 30 years to actually flow 10 miles.
Oh, wow.
Some of, some of the, it's called hydraulic conductivity, how fast water travels underground, and it may vary. Some of it may be a little quicker in some areas, it might be very slow in other areas. It's very dynamic. In fact, some of the recharge facilities may be down gradient from our wells. The water will never actually travel to a well, but it's in the aquifer. Again, the Department of Water Resources looks at the aquifer as a bank account. You're putting water in the aquifer, you may pull it out somewhere else, but overall, the aquifer is the accounting, the banking, where you're putting it. So in some wells, it may never actually, those molecules have been infiltrated, purified, may never make its way to a well. And some instances, maybe decades, 20 or more years actually to get to a well site. And then this example I put up here kind of illustrates an example of, let's say that we chose to do, serve reclaimed water to a large industry that came to the city. We still have our recharge mechanism, 10 miles of purple pipe, reservoirs, pumps, pipes, all of those expenses, and the road trenching, all those things could be abated, averted by just putting a single well in where they could, we could get a permanent recovery well, they could recover that. It's basically groundwater molecules, but it would be, under the law, reclaimed water molecules. And very simple, very cost-effective way to, to do that type of business. So again, the aquifer is your, your purple pipe. And this is just a cartoon I wanted to show you, on a historical note. Back in the 1980s, even before that, the 70s, reclaimed water was a nuisance. It was considered a nuisance water. How do you dispose of this once you treat it and clean it? Of course, that was development of the clean, you know, the 70s Clean Water Act, and of course, the 208 planned areas, and the centralized water treatment facilities really getting on strong. How do you protect the aquifer, the groundwater supply? So you saw in the 70s and 80s where it was considered nuisance. Now, through time, I kind of read that, draw that red line there where the water resource value was much lower, but, and you've got a lot more amenities that you want to dispose of that, that reclaimed water going to various amenities that would be able to take it. But through the cost of services, now, some cities have invested tens of millions of dollars or more into their purple pipe system. They've traveled far down that road, the lack of those revenues, and of course, water efficiency, and now drought planning. A lot of cities are pulling that water back. They're trying to keep as much water, sending as little water to the 91st Avenue plant, which goes to Palaverdy. We've seen those costs, those value points rising through time, and now, you know, they're reaching a point where you see fewer amenities using reclaimed water. You see a lot of cities recharging and saving that water for shortages, for drought firming, for other valuable interests they may have in that water supply. And just want to show you again, just real quick, our portfolio. The main points here, you've seen this slide before. The main points I want to point out, the 63% is, of the city's water resource portfolio is CAP water. We have a lease with the Healey River Indian Community. It's CAP, Central Arizona Project, Healey River Indian Community lease, at 7,000 acre feet. And we also have municipal industrial CAP subcontract. So just slightly around eight, a little less than 18,000. That's 63% of our water supply. If we look out short term, we could say that, yeah, we're, we're pretty safe on, we've talked about this before, when Councilmember Stip asked a question on, would we see an impact on the next few years on drought in the Colorado? Chances are no, because we have excess, and there's an ag pool that kind of buffers municipal industrial and the Indian Community water from those shortages. But remember, we've got to look out 100 years. What is going to happen 50 years, 60 years from now? And the question is, the river's been estimated to be 1.5 to 3.2 million acre feet over-allocated. So as the upper basin states start to utilize all of their allocations, and the lower basin states are utilizing all of theirs, and there's drought, we're going to be impacted. What that is, and how long that is, is what I'm trying to propose, a plan to prepare for that. And so this slide just illustrates, right now, the effluent that we control is at the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility, and right now, today, we're generating about 3,500 acre feet. And so kind of the proposal is, could we take that water and try and get it into that long-term storage credit bank account? Store that water underground for future needs. What that means through time, just a little graph here, real easy. Acre feet on the left, in, in tens of thousands. Years on the horizontal axis underneath, it goes from 2013 to 2035. The blue box, hard, hard to see a little bit, that's our full allocation of CAP water, 18,000 acre feet. Purple is what we're currently generating at the 157th Avenue Plant, and what we anticipate generating at the plant out at 2035, probably a little around 8,200, 8,300 acre feet projected. If we were to bank every acre foot of that reclaimed water source, a projection would be we'd have over 137,000 acre feet by 2035. I just wanted to show you the potential of what we can try and bank, and just wanted to show you, this is our actual total long-term storage credit bank account here. So as of March 30th of 2013, we had a little more than 87,000 acre feet in our long-term storage credit bank account. If we were to add that on, the 137,000 plus, we were able to bank all that, we're going to have 224,000 plus acre feet in our long-term storage credit bank account. What does that mean?
Wally? Do we have a limit of how much we can store?
Yes, it's based on the permit. Our basic permit would stipulate how much on an annual basis we can store at that facility, but we can always expand the facilities or create new recharge facilities and increase the permit capability to store more water underground.
Is it easy to, to expand the permit? Or does it take a long time to do that? Or, or do they make it fairly easy for us?
It's fairly easy.
Okay.
And the state is trying to make it as easy as possible. This is probably one of the best things that a city or a water provider can do, is to store water. They're trying to maximize and make it an easy process. It's fairly easy.
Okay.
So why, why is it important that we look at this from storing water underground? Well, I kind of, again, go on the drought-proofing by the city. Again, the city has its largest water resources, CAP water, 63%. So inevitably, it's not if, it's when we're going to have a shortage, and how big and how long that will be. I, I'm concerned about that, looking out 100 years. So in the future beyond 2035, and I anticipate the city will be taking and utilizing all of its CAP water, probably around 2035 or so, how can the city ensure, ensure that it's business as usual? So if there are shortages affecting CAP, we can turn on wells, recover our reclaimed water that we stored. It could be business as usual in the City of Goodyear. I think that's an economic perspective. Again, this can only be done by having a robust, long-term storage credit bank account. So here's kind of the policy considerations for, I guess, our discussion point we can have. Our current policy is, as stated, it's, our purple pipe is required right now by development, and that's through Goodyear's Engineering Design Standards and Policies Manual. Each development shall build a purple pipe system. However, in the, the water reclamation, Goodyear Code of Ordinances 12-9-1, there is no guarantee that we're going to have the water to put in those pipes. So you can kind of see the dilemma. Because again, I mentioned those things, we may not have enough water for all of those uses, if there's a lot, in peak demand, and we may have still disposal issues during the off-peak times of the year. So kind of the policy discussion, I'm looking for guidance and looking for your feedback, is if purple pipe is not required, we would have to modify the, the Engineering Design Standard and Policies Manual. We'd have to take away the shall and change that. If the city intends to recharge to the greatest extent possible all of its reclaimed water, we'd have to change Code of Ordinances as well, under the reclaim. And currently, we are doing that with the attorneys. They're working on updating those codes. They'll probably be coming before you, probably in the near future. See, we'd only directly deliver reclaimed water to an entity or project via special exemption. So I would propose that, you know, there are probably exemptions that the city may want to consider. There might be a very suitable industry that has a need for non-potable water, that makes perfect sense. It would be the exception. What does that look like? That's kind of the guidance I'm looking for, is what does that look like? I kind of threw out one there, what that criteria could look like. I looked at maybe an industry coming to the city, maybe it produces a lot of jobs, they have a need for non-potable water. And of course, this process, the water, a certain percent of it will be recovered through the, the reclamation system. So let's say, for example, it's a chip manufacturer. They're going to take direct delivery of reclaimed water, they're going to process and use that water, but we get 80, 90% of that water back through our reclamation system. Now we can treat the water. They're going to have a pretreatment process. We get the water back, we treat it, we can send it to them again. We recharge and send it to them again, via an aquifer. If they happen to build a purple pipe, they would be on the hook to build that. So that'd be one consideration to think, but I guess it goes into the policy considerations of, do we want to store to the maximum extent possible all of our reclaimed water, thinking about drought and drought firming, business as usual in the future, and then have an exemption? What would that exemption look like? And with that, I'll look for your guidance and direction.
Yes, Wally? Okay. My question is, if we have a state law from 1994 that virtually does away with purple pipe, why are we saying you have to have a purple pipe?
Great question. I've only been here a year and a half.[1480.01][1480.01](laughing)
I don't know.
That's why he's here now.[1483.13][1483.13](laughing)
I, I think, again
Did we not know it passed in 94?
Yes. Some cities have embraced the law, and they have, a number of cities, I'll say in the East Valley have embraced it, they have built regional reclamation recharge facilities. One example is called the Granite Reef Underground Storage Project, or GRUSP. A number of cities participate in that. It's a massive recharge, 100,000 acre feet per year, it used to be 200,000, but they are recharging water there, and they are recovering in their wells currently today. So some communities, though, very early on, started with disposal mechanisms of purple pipe. And of course, when you start down on that road with purple pipe and a very inexpensive non-potable water supply versus a potable water supply that's more expensive, you know, there are certain entities that anticipate that when they come to your community. So I think some communities have gone down that road far enough, they continue going down that road. Where I think we're right now, here is what we're currently doing. We deliver reclaimed water to the Ball Field Complex, and as I mentioned, the water quality is at a point where they blend potable water with it. So it's kind of a 60/40 blending, if you will. Right now, that quantity is about 100 acre feet a year, give or take a little, maybe a little more than 100 acre feet. We do have purple hydrants. If you look at, unless you travel into the reclamation and the Public Works, we do have hydrant meters on those for construction water. Our current code requires the use of non-potable water for construction. So, and that total last year was about 90 acre feet. So it's significant. It's a percent, 5% or so, of the total we're producing. And of course, we have a little bit that goes to the BMX track and the dog park. They're probably insignificant amounts, but there is a little small quantity that goes there. That is all we're delivering to. But to your point, I think the original design, probably looking at where Australia Mountain Ranch was with its purple pipe system, that it's looking at delivering non-potable to various HOA parks and golf courses and various amenities like that, there probably was the philosophical to continue on with purple pipe throughout the city. And it was not mandated in the grade water master plan, but it was, it was evaluated as what it would look like, what it would entail, from an infrastructure standpoint. I don't have a direct answer as to why we continue on that, if, if the law allows you to avert that.
Okay, thanks.
Change is hard.
Change is hard, isn't it?
Change is hard, and technology advances, and so they sat back and looked what other cities are doing to see if it really works. So maybe we sat back too long. I don't know. I wasn't here then.
Well, may I ask one more question then?
You may.
I won't ask anymore. Okay. So if we were to do away with the purple pipe, how would it affect Estrella and their water delivery with them wanting to use the extra water to do, you know, instead of us putting it in, we're going to put it in their lake for them?
I won't speak for them, but I believe currently, right now, they do own, that's a private system. They currently own that purple pipe system. It's gone in through the various requirements and permits. I know that there's not enough reclaimed water to serve all of the amenities, and right now, they're pumping groundwater, non-potable groundwater, to put in those pipes to deliver to the lakes, which is the, kind of the reservoir for their distribution system. But it's a private system. It's not the city's.
So we wouldn't hurt them if we decided to adhere to the 1994 law?
Correct. I mean, it's, it would be grandfathered, just like the purple pipe that others have I mean, it would be grandfathered, just like the purple pipe that others have built. Again, the city has not made any guarantees there would be enough reclaimed water for all purple pipe systems.
Right, yeah.
Because we can't make that guarantee. It's a small percent of what the total demand is overall in the city.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
You mentioned the ballpark and the water that's going there. It's my understanding, we're going to be using remediated water at some point, correct?
That is correct. Our goal is to have remediated water.
All right, and if that's the case, then that's going to save you some there, all right?
Correct.
Are there any other potential opportunities on remediated water, that we can use some of that? Because that comes through, that's with the injection wells that's coming back up, it's clean, you know, that we can use that as well after that gets done to, you know, not put any stress or any demand on our system.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that is, we are going to try and utilize every drop of the remediated water we can for all the various water-intensive uses. However, we have to keep in mind that the use of that water is governed by EPA and the remedy. So at any point, say five years, they could switch their remedy and say, we need the water back to inject it, back in the ground somewhere else. So we have to have a backup plan. What would that backup plan look like? So we have to remember that as a backup plan has to occur.
No, I understand, but for the short time that would help us, and especially, you know, I think the number we were throwing in, what about 3,000, 100,000 a year for the ballpark that could save us?
Yes.
And I'm really interested in trying to cut those costs down. Second question, though, deals with, and again, I think I kind of included in one of the questions I had asked with you earlier, is it seems to me there's a value in putting it in the ground, only because at some point, you know, since we're on the wells, we can only pump out what we, you know, once we put it back in. And if you take that out, then you have no backup plan or no reserves if there is drought. You'd have no bank, so to speak. So that's why I was trying to get to that question earlier. I mean, where's the value in selling it where you don't have any reserve of it going back in? Either you're going to have to buy the more expensive stuff to put it in the ground, you know, to me, which doesn't make any sense if you've got the cheaper stuff now, that's what should be going in the ground. Unless I'm missing something, that's kind of where I'm kind of coming from.
So are you questioning the amount of water we sell Del Mirage? Is that where that question came from?
I'm just saying, anything that we take out to store as much as we can, I think we should be putting in the ground.
Yeah, okay.
To your question, if our long-term storage credit bank account were to be zero, and we needed to pump out, let's say, 9,000 acre feet in the next year, and we have zero long-term storage credit bank account, we would be forced to use the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. And that water currently costs $500 an acre foot, so it's more than double the cost of what CAP water is. So if we weren't taking CMP and recharging, or we weren't taking reclaimed water and putting it in the ground, we would be forced to do CAGR D.
And that's kind of the point. You do a much better job of explaining it. But that's the point I was trying to get to, is that at some point, if it's not there, it's going to be a lot more expensive.
And it forces us into having to go rogue. We may not want to go down. This helps make a more robust water resource portfolio, gives us more options and opportunities.
Bill?
Mark, you had shown a graphic earlier about the cost of the, it's probably like And these are revenues. So you're suggesting no affluent be sold? Is that kind of the end of the road here that I'm...
I would propose that we try and store to the greatest extent possible all reclaimed water. However, proposing that there could be an exception.
Right. Right, I got that part. So if we're looking at, and I assume that's in millions, correct? The 284?
These are in monthly dollars.
So literally, $284?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a per-month number.
So I guess what I'm trying to get to is that, at the end of the day, what's the financial implication of not, of, I'm sorry, let me rephrase it. What is the financial implication of recharging all of our affluent water?
How much would it cost to recharge all of our reclaimed water?
No, if that, if you're suggesting that we don't, that we recharge it all?
Correct.
Then we're not selling it. If I'm, we're not delivering it to somebody to pay the bill for that.
Or to the Vice Mayor's point, we could decide as, because right now, we're not recharging really anything. But at some point, as we start to recharge our full potential, 3,500 acre feet, that's not anywhere, it's about a little less than half of our entire water demand in our water service area. So on an annual basis, we could start utilizing that water supply as part of that replenishment obligation.
Sure.
And so that would be roughly half or a little less than half.
So is there a financial implication to following through in your recommendation of not requiring it, not, I mean, is there any financial implication to the city? Because I'm not, I'm trying to pick through that, and I can't...
So first off, you are recharging a resource that you're already treating to those standards and have the ability to store. It becomes a commodity that you have at your possession to sell and use. The cost savings are going to come into, we need to utilize that water supply in the future. You put in it, today's dollars of 100, let's call it a little less than $200 an acre foot, say you need it 10 years from now, it might be 400, but you're actually only spent $200. The value there is $200. The other cost saving is not having a dual infrastructure. With the cost difference between potable versus non-podable, the dual infrastructure is a huge doubling potential of the cost. And of course, if you have a lack of revenues.
There's no downside to this.
I don't see a downside.
Financially, there's no downside. That probably should have been my question. Sorry. Okay, that's where I wanted to get to. Thank you.
I suppose there's downfall to citizens, because as we go, water's going to become more and more expensive. So the downfall is you're going to be faced, you know, with explaining this over and over as the time goes on to citizens that the lack of is going to drive the cost.
You know, I think the, we've had this discussion about storage and drought-proofing, et cetera, and that's a, I view this as a huge infrastructure investment. And doing it now saves us in the long run. And today, there's theoretically no downside to it, so it's all plus. And no matter what we do, the cost of our water is going to go up. And I, you know, we all know that. But I don't know that our residents do.
That's why I keep harping at it all the time.
Absolutely.
Just want a reminder each time we have water discussions to just sort of prepare them for this.
If we sit down and do nothing, I think our water, that cost for those people that we're talking about in 2030 and 2035 is going to be enormous compared to if we take action today. If I've read all this correctly.
Well, and I guess the risk of running out of water lessens when you have
That's a big deal.
good infrastructure, just, that's a basic. But you know, I have to say, and this is out of subject matter, but I think back growing up in the country that I grew up in, we had wells, that was all. And we didn't have all the sophistication, so lots of farming, lots of fertilizer, a lot of things took place. And so, you know, I think about the first 12 years of my life, I was drinking all that water. So when you think about drinking gray water, drinking however we want to term that, I guess I must have done that growing up. And I didn't see any physical harms in it so far. Now, you may accuse me of it, but the rest of you, but so far. But I think it's very interesting when you look back of where we've come. Technology has taken us from...
And regulation oversight, you know, the Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act have put us leaps and bounds for making sure that we're maintaining clean water supplies. We have very, again, you know, going back to the old adage, you know, what's cleaner, tap water or bottled water? Well, your tap water is. You know, it's governed by much more regulation than the Food and Drug Administration in your bottled water. Highest stringent standards exist for the drinking water standards for what comes out of the tap. It's cleanest water.
Well, I guess Arizona must have been kind of at the top of the apex in how they looked at water and water structure. Because I don't remember the rest of you living in other cities where you had this much information or was made so aware of this.
And going back to your earlier point, I think you were right on. You were kind of alluding to the last comment, which is obviously looking at the difference in cost between non-podable reclaimed water versus potable. If you have a development with a large turf facility and they're being served potable water, it's going to be much more expensive. As I mentioned earlier, though, the true, that true cost, that higher cost is going to force efficiency and sustainability for whatever landscape design that the community develops, it's going to ensure the highest sustainability use by those costs that are built into our rates currently versus a much lower-cost commodity, which in some instances, you can see, I would say with the City of Phoenix, you can see how low those revenues are compared to potable. It might even be abused in some instances where it's used without consideration because it's so cheap. But with that, if you believe that, I'm looking for some guidance on what you think if we're on the right road to recharge, recovery, and developing a Code of Ordinances that looks at an exception, might be a very small exception, obviously maybe coming back before the council through a resolution. I can work with the city attorneys on putting some language together coming back before you with those recommendations.
Well, let me get a response from the rest of the council, but Joey had one more question for you before that.
Well, more than that, just a comment. I've had this conversation with the city manager, and I think I've mentioned it to you before. That's why I think it's so important to come up with a comprehensive educational marketing information plan, whatever you want to call it to the general public. This is very complicated issues, dealing with water and the need, especially as we go forward with pricing, what it's going to cost. And I think it's real important that we work on an overall strategy to get this message out ahead of some of our rate studies and et cetera, on how this is going to impact us in some of the decisions we're making to keep the cost down, you know, long-term on that. So, and again, these aren't easy, understandable issues on some of these things that we're dealing with water. But I think if anybody can do it, you can put it in English so that the general public understands the importance of what we need to do as far as expenditures and deals with ensuring we have strong water in the future. With that said, I think to me, recharge with a bank is the way to go.
Yes, and I'm certain, and think we should store all that we can. I think that should be our model. So any other opinions here at the table? So I guess you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. It was a great briefing, as always.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
All right, we'll go on to 3.2. And here are the findings of the Needs and Analysis Report and Business Case Report, and review the next steps in the process. Winnet Reed, our Deputy City Manager, to present. Winnet?
Yes, and Mayor White, well, she's coming up here. We actually have consultants. The good news is, we're not too affected by the weather back east. Bad news is, our consultants that are traveling out here from Boston are. They did make it in, and then they got caught in traffic on I-10 after their four o'clock arrival at the airport. But they're on their way, so what we would propose to do is have Winnet Reed start, and they should be here. And if we need to take a break, what we'd also recommend, Mayor, is come back after the council meeting to finish it up, because the consultants truly have a lot to add to it as well.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Most of you know the gentleman sitting next to me, Dan Connerman. He's our ITS Director, and he's going to help me with the presentation. When I accepted the position as Deputy City Manager, one of my objectives was to work on the ERP project, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning System, possible replacement of that system, but at least evaluate what our options were and to identify what our needs were. And so shortly after I got that assignment, I put together an executive steering committee, and we went out and hired a vendor to help us do an assessment of our current systems, find out what we currently do, what we're lacking, where the gaps are, and help us really understand what we're dealing with. We selected what I think is an excellent company, Barry Dunn. And like Mr. Dolke just mentioned, they are on their way. So I am going to begin the presentation. This is information that they were going to give. I'm sorry, I got distracted with some of it.
Winnet, before you do that, would you, for the public listening, would you tell them what ERP stands for?
ERP is Enterprise Resource Planning System. These systems are your large systems that generally handle a lot of different functions. Is there anything else? I mean, I'm going to let you even add to that.
Thank you. So basically, what we're describing here is a system that the city uses to conduct most of its business. So this is where the city's financials reside and where all of those transactions for billing, utilities, et cetera, occur. And so when we say ERP, we're talking about a number of different modules or functions within city business that are conducted in this system. You may also have referred to this system as an enterprise-wide system in the past, or HTE, or Naveli. Those are all referring to the same system that we're referring to tonight with ERP.
Joe, you had a question?
No, I was just going to add, in simple terms, finance, payroll, planning, billing permits, HR.
Those are, financials and HR generally the top two, and then you have your community development, which includes your planning. Those are the big three. Some of the larger systems do include other modules, but those are the big three.
What, are utility systems come underneath this, water billing as well?
So yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. So between Dan and I, we're going to get this done tonight. All right, on the agenda, we're going to skip the introductions until they get here. We are going to talk a little bit about what we have done to this point and our current challenges, as I mentioned. Talk about our improvement path, and that's really our approach as to what we recommend on how we proceed with this project. And based on that, what our anticipated benefits will be and timelines and resource requirements, because it is a project that will require significant resources, not only monetary, but also our staff resources if we choose to move forward with this project. And they will, here's Seth and John, they'll be here soon. This is a kind of a timeline of where we've been and where we're going with this project. We began October 1st when Barry Dunn was on-site and actually spent several days interviewing staff, and that happened through the month of October. From that and all of the information they gathered, they had numerous pages of information that they received from IT. They went in and interviewed IT staff and our current systems. We had several employees, core users of the system, and they were interviewed, and they met, and visited with them about their current needs and what they really do need to move forward. Did I miss anything else on that? They also did a web survey, and so we had core users and non-core users. So all of our employees had the opportunity to provide input into this system.
I just wanted to add to that. One of the notes that I think they would talk about was the high rate of responses that they got to that survey. So that was rather unique compared to some of their other cities that they work with. We had quite a bit of staff engagement in providing feedback.
So what did the individuals from Barry Dunn actually do? As I mentioned, in October, they were here for fact-finding meetings. From all of this information, they put together a Needs Analysis Report and a Business Case Report, and that's available if you'd like to, copies of that, we can provide those to you. It's several pages, but very good information. And they also have currently, they've done a request for information, so taking the information that they got from their visit here, from all of the documents that they've reviewed, we did do an RFI just to determine and get a better idea of what type of systems are available out there and get a better idea of what it might cost us.
And for the public, tell what RFI is, please.
It's a request for information, and where we go out, and it's not procuring a system, but we're actually getting information on components and what it might cost us, a general idea, and timelines for implementation. So they conducted all of this since October 1st, and we are now going to review those results this evening and give you a better idea of what the implementation would mean and what the cost would be for a new system. I think I covered everything on that page that they were going to cover. If you have any questions, you can stop us. Here are some of the challenges that they identified. These are the major, kind of the 12 big challenges that they identified here at the city. I'm not going to go through each and every one. We're happy to visit about any of them that might stand out. One of the things that really was a critical challenge that came up time and time again is number three, the limited query and reporting capabilities in the city system. It is very, very difficult to do any type of reporting or querying in our current system. So that was a major issue for many of our users. In the human resources management process, most of what they do is manual. The system does not support a lot of processes for the human resources side of the business, so a lot of that is manual. And as you go down the list here, a lot of these things are not surprising for many of us who have used it. We have very limited e-government offerings and no executive dashboards. Much of what we do is manual and paper-based. We also have a lot of additional systems that we, you know, have purchased to help us provide what we need and work, you know, produce the work that we need to produce. And we are going to talk a little bit about those point solutions and how purchasing a new enterprise resource planning system will not do away with all of our point solutions. We will still need to keep many of those, but this will provide a lot of, provide us with the functionality and what we need to do to accomplish many of these things on this list. One of the other things I do want to point out, and that is on the document management functionality. We currently have limited document functionality, and we're using two different systems, Laserfish and Optaview, for document management. Many ERP systems do not include document management systems. So as we look at that, that's one of the challenges that's on this list, that we will not be able to meet through a new ERP system. We'll need to evaluate if we want to stay with Laserfish, if we want to go to Optaview, and I think there's one or two more systems out there that we will need to evaluate. So again, buying an enterprise resource system will not meet all of our needs, but it will meet many of the challenges that we currently have.
May I ask a question?
May I, uh, Wally?
Is there anything on the market that will meet our needs, so that we're not piecemealing again?
There are tier two, one systems, large systems, and I'm going to answer high level, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and see if there's any. You know, we have, there's different levels of systems out there. Tier-one systems are very large systems, and they have more modules. But according to our, uh, consultants, there aren't any out there that will do the document managements, peak portion of this. And, uh, we want to be careful, um, because getting just the system that takes care of all of those needs sometimes isn't the best for our organization. Sometimes, um, looking at some point solutions, and the interface between the ERP and those point solutions will actually provide us with, uh, uh, more of what we need than just purchasing one large system. And la- those tier-one systems are very expensive.
Yeah, I understand that, but is there any need for us to maybe change how we do business? Because we've been doing the same thing for so long. Maybe we need to take another look at that.
Absolutely, and just to touch on your, your last point there, we absolutely expect that we're going to be reevaluating business processes through the implementation of this system. We're going to be asking departments to look at how they conduct business, and to make sure that it's appropriate, um, the latest, um, industry standards, if you will, because out-of-the-box functionality with the system will support industry standards for those processes. So we'll want to make sure that we're evaluating that as we roll the system out. And to touch on the, is there a system out there that does everything? The answer is, it depends on what's everything. You know, if we say, is there a financial system out there that'll meet all of our needs in finance? The answer's probably yes, but if we say, is there one that does financials, HR, and does community development the way that we want to do it, it starts to become a little fuzzy. And so that's why we have to go through this process, to ask, um, vendors out there in the community, do you have a solution that will do what we're trying to accomplish? And so as we go through that process, we will learn more about what's available, um, to meet our needs.
I just wonder what other cities do. We can't be the only city that's behind the power curve here.
Correct.
And I don't know, you know, say, Phoenix and Abidale, all, all of them are automated somewhat. How much, I don't know.
Correct, and it's just going to be a balance between a main or core system, this ERP, and additional point solutions that we choose to integrate with. But it'll be a fluid, um, experience, so that once we have this system in place, it won't really, you won't really know if we have three systems or two systems. It'll just work, um, work well together.
Bill?
You know, I, I think, um, if I remember this correctly, the H.T.E. product, when it was first introduced back in the late nineties, I think, it was the, "We'll do everything for you." And we found now it is clearly not that product. And I, if I'm gathering this whole thing as, the key is, it doesn't matter what the product is, as long as they're talking to each other, and, and it's working together, so. While I share your concern, thinking with, there's got to be a more efficient way, um, I, I, personally, I honestly think it's probably going to be multiple systems, communicating together is going to be our efficiency, because then we don't have to undertake an entire, you know, giant project again, when it doesn't, when it breaks down. We can do it in little pieces, so.
Well, people have told me, I've only been here three years, and I've heard from staff, and I think even you, or Joe, that I was on a committee that we studied getting a new program ten years ago, and we haven't done anything.
Oh, yeah.
Here we are, and I'm just trying to be real cautious that we move forward. We do it, number one. We don't study it to death for the next ten years, and number two, we try to get it so that we're, we can integrate it and, and be off and running. And whatever we need to do, we need to, to do it, and even if we have to do it in steps, at least we can identify all of it. And then, you know, it's just being good stewards of what money we have, because we know it's expensive, but we've got to do something.
Well, I think we're at the point in, in this whole process, and I'm probably way ahead of you guys, but we're, I think we're at the point in this process that, um, this is deferred maintenance-
Yeah.
-that has gone on way, we've deferred it way too long. And this, they started talking about replacing this when I first came to the city in two thousand and one.
See, I thought you told me that.
Yeah, and that was, and it was only a few years old then. So, um, you know, I'm, and I know we're moving forward, so I'm not going to bang on that we got to do it now thing, because I know we are.
And, uh, we will also talk about implementation and doing it, you know, how we would recommend that we implement that, a module at a time, and, and, and discuss that here in, in the next few slides. But first, I'd like to turn this over, and I'm really glad to see him, the two gentlemen to the right. Seth Hedstrom and John Grace. I'm going to let you guys introduce yourselves, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Seth Hedstrom, uh, with Barry Dunn. I'll keep the introduction fairly brief, but I am the Project Manager for our team. Uh, so I work closely with John, as well as a couple other team members. So far, we've met with, um, a number of folks across the city, and we've done quite a bit of research, and about at a midway point in our project.
Hello, everyone. My name's John Grace. I'm the Lead Business Analyst for this project, so, uh, again, working very closely with the city, and Seth as the, uh, Project Manager.
We were just talking about current environment challenges. I don't know if you want to, um, start, or just leave there, and then we'll just pick it up.
Sure, so I'm sure you saw the first few slides on sort of the project overview, and where we are at the point in our work. Um, so far, we have documented a number of challenges and areas for improvement. We did want to highlight, um, twelve on this slide. A few in particular, John's going to speak to on this slide.
Yep, yep, so, uh, what we wanted to do, again, we didn't want to go through each of these items, line item by line item, but we wanted to at least discuss, at a high level, the themes that we see coming out of these current, um, challenges. Uh, I don't think, uh, many of these are a surprise to folks, but, um, we did want to take out the high-level themes from these. So if we look at the first three, these are really three that are actually very closely related, and these aren't in any priority order, but it just so happens that the first three are, are the ones that, uh, we see the most often. Um, the one that really kind of came to a head was the, the first one, that multiple departments are using multiple systems outside of the city's, uh, current H.T.E. system to maintain data. And that's usually what we've found is being maintained in Excel documents. Um, and then, really, the main cause of that is that, uh, kind of leading into number two, is that there's limited integration between these systems. Uh, and when that happens, the end result is the third one, that there is really limited, um, query and reporting capabilities of the system. Because if information isn't maintained in the system, you really don't have anything that you can report on. And for that information, uh, that is in the system, folks kind of told us that, uh, it's very difficult to find that data. So even if it's there, we're querying it or reporting on it, is very cumbersome. Uh, so those are really the, the first three items. If we kind of move down the list to the ninth item, we'll see that there are a number of third-party applications that are maintained outside of the system. Um, there's really a number of reasons for this. I think the highest, or the largest reason, is the lack of functionality in the existing system. So again, uh, folks are having to maintain this information in external systems. And then there are also third-party applications that may require, um, specific functionality from, uh, a system that an ERP system may not be able to provide. And if we look at eleven, you'll also see that the existing system, uh, has really limited areas of e-government offerings or online applications. And what this is really kind of hindering the, the city right now is to be able to allow your citizens to go online, do a number of, uh, functions online, uh, really kind of making you less transparent as an organization to your citizens. And then lastly, uh, the existing system really doesn't provide what we would consider executive-level dashboards, which really means, uh, you don't have the opportunity to become more proactive, you're really more reactive at this point.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, reiterate on many of these, that the key theme that we've really heard in all of our meetings is that the amount of extra work going on to make things happen is commendable, in some cases, because of limitations in the technology, so that, that definitely is an overarching theme.
I have to agree with you. When I think of just this quick briefing so far, it says that we have to thank our staff, the, actually, the hours that they've had to absorb to get most of their work done, work done. It hasn't been efficient at all. And I, I, I can imagine that the man-hours after this, the man-hours on projects will be much less than they've had in the past. And the other thing is documentation has always been a problem since I've been in, I've been aware since two thousand and five, and we many times needed this, and we did, we couldn't get it, and the research of trying to find it, so. Go ahead.
I've got a question.
Yes, Wally?
Oops, sorry. Oops. Sorry.
Well, I guess her question's gone.
Okay. Would you tell me what a single view of a custom file is?
Sure, so this would be the ability to look up a customer, and whether it relates to utility, receivable, or any other type of money that they may have, um, done transactions with the city on, you could see all of that history on a single point.
But we can't do that.
Today, it would be very challenging to get a true, true look. There are some cases where a few different perspectives are blended, but not a true comprehensive view.
That's why we here, we'll get back with you.
Okay.
We'll bring the information later.
The purchasing process involves several manual and paper-based processes. Tell me about that.
So in some cases, there are, um, paper signatures, um, paper documentation for approval that are distributed. Um, there is some level of automation that's been integrated into the, into the workflow, um, but there are still instances where there's a paper trail that has to go around for items to be purchased.
Have they been able to keep track of what they're doing there?
I, I think they're able to keep track, but again, uh, some of that information that's being tracked is being done externally of the system right now, you know, in, whether it's, typically what we saw was MX Excel was kind of being used to do that tracking.
Okay.
Sherry?
I have a que- I have a question on number ten. Kind of really, what is that? And it says not being used, is that something that would be nice if we could use it? And can we use it in the system, and exactly what does that get us?
Collaborative Plan Review Functionality gets to the Community Development side of the house, so this is building plans, this is development-type plans. Um, there are technologies out there today that likely many of the developers are using, where these large plats are not used anymore, it's all electronic. Um, so there is technology that will allow you to receive those files, large files and high-quality, mark them up using drawing tools within the programs, and really never have it exist in paper until a final version. So, um, that's technology that's out there. It's relatively new, but it's becoming very much more common, and I think what we heard, um, planning for future growth, this is an area that now's the time to implement that, so that you're in a good position to plan for that.
That's not what we have now with the-
Project.
With the-
We do have some, uh, implementation of this with project docs, but it's in its infancy and usage here within the different departments.
And I can see the service, uh, you know, level just rise in that department when this all gets installed.
So why don't we move on to, um, the next slide, if there are no other questions? This slide focuses on the recommended improvement path for the city. Um, this improvement po- path was identified at the beginning of our work. Uh, we've done a lot of research to, um, confirm this path and better inform it. And overall, the path is to proceed with a competitive procurement that's going to focus on an integrated solution, but consider point solutions. The definition of a point solution would be a highly specialized piece of software that might deliver so much of a improved functionality that it would be worth integrating it back to the core system. So, um, the city's desire is to leave that option on the table, um, but to promote an integrated environment with a limited number of total systems.
Joe?
Before you came, what was really interesting, what was mentioned earlier about city processes, and to me, and again, none of this surprised me, I was, when I worked for Glendale, before I came to Goodyear, I was part of their implementation, their people saw. So I know what's involved, I know what's, time's involved, the resources. It says it's going to take you a year, try two, whatever, you know, it takes, it's always a little longer than what you think. But the point is, is your process has to match up with the software. So my point is, and again, I'm only making assumptions, that we've gone through our business processes and made sure that any tweaks or whatever needs to be with that, before we go out on the software bid, to make sure not, we're not trying to pigeonhole a software to a process. Does that make sense?
Does.
Absolutely.
Yep. Yeah, we would certainly agree that, uh, many times, we've seen other localities where they'll try to make a new system fit old processes, and you're not going to get an improvement from that. Um, we generally see really two points in this type of project, where you would look at your business processes. Um, one is early on, in the planning stage. The other is, once you know either your preferred vendor, or the couple of vendors you're going to work with, because they likely will help you with a few options, and based upon other places they've worked, hopefully help consult you through some business process improvements as well.
Is that what Dan said he was going to do?
Dan, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. I don't know that it's something that I'm going to do, but all of the departments-
Well, isn't that what we just talked about?
That's exactly it. We would expect that the departments would review their business processes as we go through this implementation, and try to adapt to the industry-best standards, um, that are kind of built into the system, versus trying to bend the system to our old process.
So we can change to fit the new system?
Correct.
If necessary.
Joe?
And I, I think the key is what Dan had mentioned was, we're looking at best practices on the processes, so that, and, you know, and like I said, I would assume some of the software that you're going to go out, is going to be implementing that, but, I mean, there's nothing worse than having an old outdated process, trying to, trying to pigeonhole into a updated software.
Exactly right. Um, before we get to the benefits of this path, are there any questions about just the nature of what this would entail? This improvement path?
No, I think we're ready to go on.
Okay. So on slide eight here, we have listed a number of benefits of this improvement path. Um, so similar to the challenges, we want to highlight a few here, and then if there are questions on others, we can certainly answer those. There are really benefits from two perspectives. The first are the benefits of a structured procurement. So there are benefits of going through a structured process that's going to be competitive to look at a variety of vendors. The other side of it are the benefits of the expected and anticipated outcome of what your future systems environment will be. So kind of looking at it from both sides, the benefit of a structured procurement is that you will document the system requirements early on. Uh, you will go through a competitive process that will have vendors put their best foot forward, and you'll do that in such a way that you'll see demonstrations, you'll speak to other localities using those software systems, potentially even a site visit to see those in, in live operations. So those are the benefits of a truly structured process. The benefits of the expected outcome of having an integrated solution with maybe a point solution here or there, uh, is that many of these processes that the city undergoes today that require Excel and paper to make these different systems work together, won't be required in the future environment. Many of these different systems will be replaced, um, by a centralized system that can integrate and share data without the need for these, uh, these, uh, in third parties to tie those gaps together. Leaving the option open for a point solution, um, does allow the city at least to consider where that might make business sense. Um, some of the other cities we've worked with that, um, have taken this approach have found that there are some areas where even if it is a separate system, it's worth it, because you get such a high level of functionality, that integration can be managed. And at least leaving that option open early on at this point in the project, um, likely will benefit the city in the long term.
Sherry?
I don't think of my questions that quickly. With, um, the point solution, it, it sounds like it's a bit of a modular approach, that we can then just upgrade those modules or areas a- as technology changes or our needs change? Am I understanding that right?
Potentially. A point solution would really be a, a separate vendor, so you likely would have a, a separate contract with this vendor. There's a lot of different ways to handle it.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to, if we had a point solution for X, and that got outdated or our needs changed, we don't have to change the whole system. We can just work with that one vendor, so we're not redoing the whole thing like Bill said, that this couple of years after would have to be redone. And what is the life with the change in technology for a system like this?
Tough question.
Do you really want to answer that?
If I don't have to, I'd take that option, but I don't think that's an option.
Take the fifth.
There are some records out there, I think, you know, we've had clients anywhere from twenty to even up to thirty years. I don't know if you've quite hit, broken that record yet, but, um, most cities, I would say, anticipate getting ten years out of it. Um, it likely becomes fifteen pretty quick. Um, many of the vendors today have different philosophies around upgrade paths. Um, there's not as much of a point where you reach end of life, so if you stay up with your maintenance, the technology's changed in, in a way that you typically don't have such a big jump ten years after, like you used to, you know, in the last, past few decades.
And one of the things that we're working with Seth and John on, the, the fact that we're growing, and we are becoming a larger city, so that is going to be factored into this process, that we want to look at systems that will at least grow with us, and, and won't be, come out, you know, useless to us because of the size and growth, so we are adding that to the mix.
I think the other, uh, benefit that I wanted to just highlight, um, as well, is that by, by essentially modernizing all of your software, it will open up a lot of opportunities for increased reporting, citizen self-service, as John mentioned. Building those interfaces to other systems today, due to the age of some of the technology, it's nearly impossible to even try to develop those interfaces. So at least by modernizing some of these core systems, the opportunity's there, but still promoting a total, less number of systems. So with that improvement path, uh, in mind, at the start of our project, as I mentioned, we did some research, um, to better inform, uh, where that path would take the city. Um, that research was based upon an R.F.I. that we prepared as part of our work, so, um, we did release specific metrics related to the city, uh, released it to the vendor community so that they could respond to it. A little different from a true R.F.P., because it just didn't have the detail. This was more of a research-based exercise, a little higher level, um, but it was aimed at understanding, um, some basics around functionality, availability of modules, implementation timelines, and of course, cost. So we did do some original research for the city. In addition to that, um, our own, um, experience working with other cities, some larger, some smaller, and how those vendor proposals came in. Um, so based upon that, we have quite a bit of information that we want to go through in these next few slides, and I know it gets a little more detailed here, but on this slide, we want to- and I know it gets a little more detailed here, but on this slide, we wanted to present the timeline that we researched and the budget information. So looking at the timeline, based upon the research and our own experience, the city can expect a timeline of approximately 20 to 24 months that would involve multiple phases, based upon the planned modules, likely three different phases. That would mean that the earliest phase could be live as early as July 1, 2015, with other modules going on live, going live consequently after that. Based upon the RFI responses, the software cost would be in the neighborhood of $2 million, and the next slide will take us into more detail, but just want to point out, that would be the cost truly essentially what you would be paying the software vendor for the licensing and their implementation services. Other cost areas that we typically see generally relate to technical infrastructure and then resources. So generally, you have your software, what you pay the vendor, any technical planning that you need to make, any upgrades to the related infrastructure to really get the most benefit out of your new software, and then the resource planning that goes with it. So looking at those three areas, based upon the RFI, some of our past experience, a range of about 3.8 to 4.5 million with some contingencies.
Joe?
Certainly, at this point in the project, we wanted to include some areas of contingencies.
Just a question, will you be running a parallel system, so that you're getting all the bugs, the tests before the data gets transferred over live?
Yeah, and we would require that the vendor provides a test environment, so that prior to, very much prior to go live, during all the training, configuration, there can be a test environment, typically, parallel is required on the payroll modules, and then others, you can consider a cutover, many vendors prefer that approach, and we see it quite a bit, where essentially, one day you stop on the old system, the next day you start on the new one, but that's after many months of testing and training.
Been through this road, I would prefer, you know, something else, maybe, you know, more than real live data going in there and running some type of systems and make sure it works, we've had some on the federal level where they just turned something loose, doesn't work real well.
Really?
Yeah, I want to make sure that that's thoroughly vetted, you know, before we go live with that, especially with the financial and the utilities and variety of things like that on there.
Yes, sir.
I think that came to mind, as soon as you started talking in that direction, your question was certainly, you didn't want to direct it that way.
Well, I've been through this, I've been, you know, and we did do some parallel testing on that, because there's nothing worse than going live in your financials, your utilities, you have all these bugs popping up on you, and you have a miss, and it gets worse once you're going live to fix it, than if you would have been working those bugs out before you went live, so.
I think the one thing the public knows, they understand that part of it, so.
I'm just hoping we're going down that path.
Yes.
If I may, we would definitely have a very formal data validation process, where the different departments that own those processes would run through them over and over again and do user acceptance testing to make sure that the system performs before we would cut over.
Okay, so based upon those three cost areas, we do go into a little more detail, as you can see here on slide 10, that we went into more detail on the software component, so the first out of those three. Within this chart, a few different cost areas that we've included that add up to that $2 million estimate that we have. Generally, we see costs related to licensing, data conversion, professional services and training. Professional services is often your testing, your configuration, your design, your setup, and what the software vendor would do around their own project management, so tracking risks, tracking issues, things like that. Based upon those cost areas, the RFI responses came in at about 1.5 million, however, we, in our experience, have found that RFIs are generally 20 to 30% less than an RFP, because there's less detail, vendors are going to assume less, so you essentially need to plan for a 30% increase, and that's what brought us to the $2 million. You can see the annual maintenance is about 182,000, nearly always, that's about 20% of your software licensing, so the RFI responses came back true to that as well. Some of the factors as well that come into play here is that both the one-time and recurring costs are only based upon the associated software provider, so this is just that first cost area again, some of the other factors that will come into play, the nature of the vendor you select, so certainly, if you pursue a vendor that serves larger organizations, larger cost with that, the nature of the modules, any interfaces, and then any modifications or customizations that the city might pursue. All right, so on the next slide here, slide 11, we went into more detail on the other component that was a large portion of the budget, which was resource requirements, you can see in this chart, we have a good number of line items related to the expected resource commitment needed. These are broken down into three phases, that first column is the procurement phase, that's essentially the time up until you sign the contract with your software vendor, then you have implementation between contract and go-live, and finally, operations, which is really into perpetuity. So based upon those three phases, you can see some of the estimates that we have in here, ranging from the project sponsor at the top all the way down through the subject matter experts, those department users that know the business processes better than anybody else, and who will need to be involved in configuration and the testing in those types of activities. The estimated resource levels needed for the module leads and owners, that line item we have in there, that's one of the areas that will vary quite a bit. There are a few situations across the city where there's one person that's really a subject matter expert for more than one module, and that's where there's some complexity, as that demand upon that individual increases, the backfilling requirements, some of those additional considerations does become challenging.
And I do want to stress that we are recommending that we do some backfilling, and so those individuals have the ability to go and do the implementation, the testing and all of that, and that's where some of the cost on those resources come in, is backfilling those employees in order to make sure we're still getting our work done, but this individual has the opportunity to really work on the implementation of it.
Bill?
When are you, I realize we're 2015 and we're down the road, but are we thinking temporary employees, not permanent full-time positions, correct?
Depending on the position and the module we're implementing, we'll probably move full-time employees that will be the SMEs into that implementation, then see if we can backfill internally, and then go to temporary if we can't, but obviously not hire more.
Correct.
There, but give others opportunity within the organization to step up and do some of those other duties.
We certainly wanted to put a focus on this slide, I think often times, we start a project and our clients really haven't put as much thought into this as much as the city has so far, so that's good to see, but certainly, given the number of modules and how this is going to touch nearly every department across the city, that's an important consideration. Resources is often one of those early risks that can be identified during a project, if the folks with the true knowledge of the system are too busy in everything else they do because of that knowledge, there are many challenges that can come into play, and those are challenges that you wouldn't necessarily realize until months of live operation, when you find out you didn't configure it just right, so, very important point.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm not sure which vendor we're going to get, but I remember when we implemented PeopleSoft, or City Council, they got a nice little, you know, show of how the software would work, and they thought it would be like Excel, you buy it, you put it, you install it, bingo, it works, right? It took us a year, year and a half just to build the security and the fish-boning and all the other that goes into building it. So when you have a system, and I assume they're still like that, I mean, it's been a while since I did it, so I assume it's nothing, just buy, you plug it in, and I'm sure there's security, there's a lot of different, you know, pieces that you have to build into the system itself, so. I know it's going to take a while, like I say, I went through it, my concern's always been, because I know this is a huge project, but as a former employee, it's well overdue, and I know Bill would feel the same way of using this, so I really wish the best, you know, I want to make sure this thing's done right, and we get the best in there, because I'm looking for efficiencies and effectiveness, effective ways that we can deliver service to help try to maintain and keep our costs down, and I think going this route and the technology that we help the employer, I'm hoping with the mitigation of some of our processes will get us there, so. I'm for you moving forward, put it that way.
Great, John?
Yep, so on the next slide, we just wanted to discuss the next steps that we have in the process and as well in the project. So there's been a number of tasks that we have completed, but we still have quite a few that we need to go through as part of this project. The ones that we have listed here are what we would consider a very high-level list, within each of these tasks, there are, if you want to consider them subtasks for each of these overall project areas. So the next one that we look at that we're going to be delivering will be to develop what we call the functional and technical requirements, so very similar to when we came on-site to do our fact-finding meetings, we met by certain areas, for example, general ledger, budgeting, purchasing. The requirements that we develop are very similar to that, where they're going to be broken out by these modules, by general ledger, by budgeting. We will then go with, through these requirements with the city to either confirm them, modify them, add new ones during our next trip, it's tentatively scheduled for January, that trip is what we call our joint requirements planning session, so we call them JERP sessions, and then again, allows us to make sure that we've got the requirements that the city's going to need in a new system, and it also allows folks the opportunity to continue to be involved in the project, so that it's a very open and collaborative process, so that we know going to the next phase, everyone's needs have been documented in these requirements. At the same time, what we'll also be doing is developing the request for proposal document, and when we come back on-site, we will meet with the city's purchasing department, review that document to make sure that it meets all your terms and conditions, and then really coming out of that joint requirements planning sessions, we'll have the final requirements, as well as the final request for proposal document, which will form the overall request for proposal that we will issue to the vendor community. Once we do that issuance of that RFP, we will administer any questions, as well as provide answers to vendors that they have regarding the RFP process. Once we have received the proposals from the vendors, we will provide to the city what we call proposal summary memos, basically give you an overview of the proposals that you've received from these vendors, and then from there, we will identify a short list of vendors to bring in to do onsite demonstrations, once you have those onsite demonstrations, we'll then select a vendor and move into reference checks, as well as contract negotiations.
So clearly, there's still quite a bit of work to be done, I think the biggest points is that, based upon what we've done so far and based upon the research that we know, we can already start to understand how we want to shape this RFP to leave as many options open as possible, but in doing that, as I mentioned, we'll have a structured procurement process, that's exactly what we're describing here, through the requirements that all the vendors will respond to, and these number into the thousands, we're really going to get at the detail level here, and then similarly, through the software demonstrations, we'll have vendors come to the city, allow a large number of staff to see it, and start to understand what's really going to fit well for different, for different requirements.
Questions?
Get her done, is what I heard, okay, all right, I'm seeing nodding around, so, okay.
No, I think everybody's looking forward to this great anticipation, so. It's not like we're asking staff to do more and more, but I guess we are, aren't we, it's a new system to learn, so that'll be, I think it'll have its challenges also, but thank you so much, I heard it was very difficult for you to get here tonight, and I know it had to be somewhat stressful, but thank you very much for finally making it on your flight and then through the traffic that you endured coming here to Goodyear, so, but we do try to tell people it's only 20 minutes from the airport, so. That must have been, must have been highly unusual tonight that you were trapped in traffic, so. We don't want you to think this was a negative welcome to Goodyear, but we do welcome you to Goodyear, and we do look, we really anticipate with great excitement the outcome of all this, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll get up to the dais, okay, and then start the meeting and then take a break, is that how we need to do that tonight, I'm looking at the city clerk, do we have to have this on at 6?
No, you can take a break.
We can take a break now, all right, do we have to start at 6, can I get them till 10 after? Five-minute break, all right, five-minute break before the meeting, meeting adjourned.